Here.
Doug.
Here.
John.
Here.
Karen.
Here.
Kathy.
Here.
All right, and our agenda for today is to listen to the presentation from Marty in RDG for our housing study. That's the only item on the agenda, as I understated. Do we need a motion to accept the agenda?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Bye, Susan. Here, Jeremy. John.
I.
Kathy, I.
Karen, I. Karen, I.
I love them, Karen.
Doug.
Doug, I.
All right.
Jeremy.
Yes, I have everybody gotcha.
Okay.
With that.
Okay.
Taken care of then? I think we're ready to roll, Marty.
Good.
Let's let the show.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen, so we'll check to make sure that you get that. And then probably it will be best if whenever you're not talking, if you try to be sure to mute your your computer cuts back on the feedback and so forth. And that's one of the shortcomings of Zoom is that it's it's pretty sensitive. So first of all, you should now hopefully be seeing the cover of the show of the presentation.
We do, Marty.
Great, okay.
Yep.
Okay, terrific. Well, first of all, I hope everybody is well. Last time I was in Piastza was a very fateful weekend and week. It was kind of when everything really changed pretty dramatically. And most of us haven't traveled or in some cases been out of our house since then. But but tonight we'll have a chance to really immerse ourselves in housing analysis and situations in the city. And I hope you'll find this interesting. I have, as as we put it together, and I think there's there's a lot of interesting material to ponder and to think about from a from a subsequent policy point of view. The presentation, as you'll see, is really done in three parts. The first part is analytical. So it's a lot of numbers, and I'll try to make it as interesting as possible. It culminates in a projection of housing possibilities and needs. The second part is kind of the best way to describe it is my take on the community based on several hours of listening sessions and walking around and talking to Whitney and and seeing what facts look like on the ground. And then the third part are directions forward, are things to think about now as the city embarks in the future, as you think about the comprehensive planning issues that are that are coming and so forth. So without further ado, we'll start out with the analysis part. By the way, if I will have my managed participants thing on here, if I can get it to activate. It's it's not doing. If if you, yeah, there it is. Okay, so so if you have, for for those of you who are not necessarily all that familiar with Zoom, if you have a question or a clarification that you need to, you'd like to ask during the course of the presentation, either raise your hand visually so that I can or or yell or something like that, or or you'll see a little sort of raise hand button. If you click on the participants list in Zoom, and that will allow you to basically, it'll show up as a little hand raised on my screen, and then I can I can stop and see that you're you're you'd like to talk about something. Okay, so first of all, we start this this part of the process with looking at population statistics and population change and dynamics. And I apologize if this looks like a little bit of the exponential curve of of a plague that we've become all too familiar with, but 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 it's actually the population curve of Piastza. And which is also exponential, by the way. So so there it is. So so all of almost all of Piastza's growth, as you well know, has been in the last 30 years. And the most dramatic period was the 1990s, not necessarily in numbers, but in percentage. And that growth is continuing. So as as we've come now to 2018, and and we have been able to, 2018 is the most recent data that that is available from the Census's American Community Survey. That that is the basic number that we use. We that estimate is 1,772 people, up from 1,377 in 2010, which is an annual growth rate of about 4% or so. So a good thing to keep in mind. When we look at overall growth throughout Dubuque County, and a lot of what we'll be talking about are comparisons and relationships to numbers in Dubuque County. Yeah, in many of the housing studies that we have done over the last 25 years or so, many of the communities that we've worked in are actually standalone communities. So they're not really affected by by metropolitan area. But but it gets a little bit trickier when we think about a city like Piastza, which is very much influenced by commuter travel into Dubuque. So we've got to think about the a regional share of the market for Piastza and evaluate it against that. Piastza, to nobody's surprise, has grown faster than any other city in in the county. The only competitor is Asbury, and Asbury has slowed down a little bit in the last in the last few years. I put Manchester in here, even though it's not in the county, because it's kind of interesting to see where the divide is, the gravity divide is between the Dubuque metropolitan area and what we might refer to as rural Iowa. So you can see that Manchester, with a little bit of a negative downturn, according to the 2018 estimate, is on the other side of that gravitational divide. So we are growing at a fast rate. And 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 it's also important to mention that the annual growth rate, as the community gets bigger, tends to decline. That's because the base that it doesn't mean that it's slowing down, but it means that the base that we're calculating on goes down, gets bigger. So in order to maintain the same growth rate, you have to grow actually much faster than you might have in 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 previous years. So so this is all useful in terms of telling us what the future population trends are and what the population of Piastza might be, might be in the future. We like to do another analysis, too, because we're trying to get as deep into understanding population dynamics as we can. And that is a bit of a cohort survival or migration analysis in 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 this concept. So, you know, you can look at at two age cohorts. Look, for example, at ages 35 to 44, and compare that, those two from 2010 to 2020. And they might have actually dropped. But and and there's a validity to that, because it says that 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 particular age sector has dropped. But we're really interested in who's moving in and who's moving out. So you take that group, ages 35 to 44 in 2010, and then you analyze how many of that group survived to be counted in 2020 in the age group of 45 to 54. And if that if we apply actuarial tables to that that are accepted by the Census, and that tells us a predicted population. So so maybe that like 90, 98% or 98 and a half percent of that particular cohort would survive the 10 years later to be counted in that in in that cohort. And that's popular, that's natural population change. The difference between that prediction and the actual count represents in migration or out migration. So that's where we find out what's going on dynamically in the population. So hopefully that makes that that makes sense. So when we looked at the population behavior from 2000 to 2010, we found that the most rapid growth were people who were in 2000 in the 25 to 44 age group. So you can see those big numbers of of an enormous growth over over expected population. And you see that reflected in the youngest age group, namely in 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 little children up to kids in high school age. You can see pretty significant significant percentage losses, but 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 not so significant in terms of numbers in the sort of younger adults. So these are like pretty much college students who are moving away and and are not counted in those in those age groups. So we're seeing the first 10 years of the of the century a very rapid increase in in the number of of people who are younger and maturing families who are beginning to have kids. It changes a little bit in 2010 to 2018. One caveat is that these are ACS estimates. They're not always accurate. So so they're the best we've got, but they're based on a 2014 to 2018 average. And then are represented as the the estimate, the best guess of Census Bureau in 2018. We won't have a really good count. Wow, it's hard to say when we'll have a really good count, because the Census is going to be awfully strange this year. But normally, we wouldn't have a solid count until 2021, when those numbers really get more solidified. But we do the best, we do the best we we can. And and this was interesting, because this showed an influx of younger adults than we had in 2000 to 2010. So you can see that in those in those green lines. And what I would refer to as an underperformance among older adults. So so there were fewer people estimated in in the overall, in the 55 and overage group by the 18 estimates that we might have expected. That was a little surprising to me, but 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 that's what these these estimates show. And that's why I put a little bit of a qualifier here, that it's an estimate. We don't know that it's absolutely accurate. So so take it with a grain of salt, but but it it does indicate that there's now a significant ability to attract people in their late 20s and early 30s that are showing up in that big growth cohort in the 35 to 44 age group for these for these estimates. Interesting, interesting stuff. Now, construction activity. So so put that aside in terms of understanding, basically, we we in Piastza are attracting families. It's kind of the bottom line and 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 possibly shedding older adults. Now, if we look at construction activity, you'll see significant growth over over the years in in the city. So so we were sort of cruising along at 13, 12, 19 units, single family units per year. And then it's now jumped up pretty significantly, so that we are now according to our numbers, second in the Dubuque area in terms of single family housing construction. You'll also see a growth in the number of buildings that are classified as duplexes. They're really single family attached. So the difference is that single family duplexes are basically one structure on one lot divided in half. Single family attached can will be classified as duplexes. But but they're more consistent with some of the development that we're seeing, for example, in Thunder Valley and and in other locations. So all in all, we are now generating about 35 housing units a year over the last three years. And that's a pace that we're expecting to continue during during the next 10 years. We were we were interested in comparing the amount of construction going on in Piastza to that of other cities in in Dubuque County. And you you see something very interesting happening here. This blue line that my hand, if you can see it, is tracing is Piastza. So Piastza's housing development and Asbury's housing development crossed right at that point between 2016 and 2017. And and Piastza's is continuing now up to 28 per year. Dubuques has dropped. Dubuques continue to build housing, but but only about half of it's been single family. And the other communities have 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 been slowly growing a little bit. So Farley and Epworth and so forth are are showing a slight increase. The interesting thing as well is that for the decade, Piastza represented about a little bit less than 8% of the total housing output of Dubuque County for these years combined, and has only about 1.8% of the population. So Piastza, not surprisingly, is overperforming. But what's going on right now is that Piastza is representing about 15 to 16% of the housing production in Dubuque County. So so that's a significant change. And 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 for 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 from Piastza's point of view, as a growing community is actually a very good thing. So if you consider that that the 2018 population represents a little bit less than 2% of the metro area's population, but about 15 or 16% of its housing production, that's a pretty interesting juxtaposition. Okay. It's it's also in this, this really sort of identifies the same thing. So the top the 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 top table is the behavior of the housing market in Dubuque County from 2000 to 2018, where the county has added has, on the average, added 334 units, 174 of which are single family, and 93 are are renter occupancy, as well as adding some vacant units. Piastza has had an average annual change of of 19 units, but again, that's accelerated in the later part of this decade. So we are now averaging about 35 units over the last 35 units per year over the last three years, which which is a significant amount of the of the overall market. We now look at affordability, and that's that's another interesting issue, and one in our listening sessions that was considered to be very, really quite important one, namely that Piastza does not bill for very go very much. It's under $300,000. And that that, in fact, is true. So if we look at Piastza's estimated numbers right now, the city has an estimated household income of about 87,000 people. Its median house value, that is 50% above that and 50% below that, according to Census estimates, and those are always a little bit low, is $234,000. We we like to do a valued income ratio, really sophisticated statistic here that takes the median home, the median home value and divides by the median household income, produces a ratio, and and that tells us basically whether the overall housing stock is affordable to people who are, at this point, living in the community, or whether they they are overburdened. So it's a very interesting thing. This is a little bit of a digression. But if you track this number from 2000 to 2010 for the United States, this income over value ratio, you could see it steadily rising to the point that just before the housing financial crisis, it had reached about 3.5. That state, that's a red line. That's kind of a danger zone. And that indicates that the housing stock in the United States's nominal value was getting too expensive for the people or getting burdensome for the people who lived in it and were buying it. And that's kind of that 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 was, I thought, a good predictor for what happened in 2008. So what this is telling us, you can see my little index, my my cheat sheet below. If the number, if this ratio is under 2.4, it means people are living in undervalued housing. If it's between 2.4 and 2.8, it it feels about right. This is on the basis of doing 150 of these things. If it's between about 2.8 and 3.3, it's getting to be a little bit of a borderline burden. It's about 3.3, it's 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 too high. Now, again, that's relative to the population of the city, and not relative to everybody else. Because if we took that ratio for the Dubuque area with with a with with a median household income of 57,000, divide that in 234,000, and you get something like 4.1 or 4.2. You can see that 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 calculation, which which says what we know, and that's that means that 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 for the the, say, the median buyer in Dubuque, Piastza's too expensive a market. Asbury is at 2.5, really pretty much the same median home value, but a little bit higher median income, according to the estimates. Interesting, if you look at Dyersville, it's a town I know very well. Its median house value is quite a bit lower than ours. But 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 its its ratio gets a little bit higher because the incomes are lower. So it's a real, it's an interesting statistic to to be able to 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 gauge. Now, the interesting question is that if we looked at the overall income needed to afford the median house in Piastza, it's about $96,000 to to be comfortable buying the median home in 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 the city of Piastza. So so that gets to be a little bit on the high side in terms of the the overhaul, the overall ratios in in the metropolitan area. And that's and and that's why a lot of folks in the listening sessions were saying $300,000 and above is is missing an element of the market. And we need to be trying to get a little bit below that in and 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 you'll you'll see how that how that all works in in just a minute. Is everybody with me so far?
Yep.
Okay, good. This, this is another measure of of income distribution. And here we're comparing the income ranges of people in town versus the number of units that are available in town that are paired to that to that income group. And that's telling us there's a little bit of room at the top, actually, that that there are there are people in town who are living in who are living in homes that are not exactly overburdening them from a from a from a housing perspective. Doesn't mean they're going to move. There it's a it's a comfortable ratio. But 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 more than most places that we see, this statistic is interpreted as a relatively good balance of 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 people who need housing or who whose whose income fits housing in a certain range versus the amount of housing that's available in that range. If we compared the ratios for the for Dubuque County and Piastza's housing distribution as a percent, we would find that we would, we were relatively unaffordable to most of the metropolitan area. This is, this is a map that I was, I was spending about two hours and ran my wife out of the house because I was screaming at the computer, not at her, but at the computer, trying to get to print. And so it's a foggy JPEG that that doesn't look very good. And I have no idea why it why it wouldn't print the regular way. But this is, this is looking, this, this is off of Zillow. And and maybe the gods of Zillow are preventing me from printing it. But 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 it shows the the relative bracketing of costs in in various subdivisions and parts of 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 Piastza. So 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 you you can see that that our most expensive housing is to the is is right now in extreme north. That subdivision is Oak, Oak something. And and to the east, Thunder Valley is is in the 250 to $300,000 range in terms of Zillow's value. And then it gets less expensive as we move toward Piastza Street and and Main Street and Sundown and the street that changes names a few times. So but 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 even in Old Town, the homes, the structures that are still valued between 150 and $200,000. So it's all, it's 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 a pretty high end market, even in even in the the lower or more affordable part of of that of that distribution. Now we get to projecting the demand for housing. And so the 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 process that we use here is to assign a population scenario, and we evaluate a few and then take a guess as to which one comports best with what we think is reality, uses that number, assigns a vacancy rate, a population per household, a replacement housing rate, and uses that to be able to to forecast how much housing will be needed over a 10-year period, and what that means in terms of 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 annual production. So first of all, the most, the growth rate for Piastza in a normal housing market, we I couch that in a reservation, because we we really don't know what's going to happen now. But 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 as I tell clients, after the 1918 flu pandemic, the roaring 20s started two years later. So so it will be a difficult transition. But pending some other disaster, it will be a tran, it will be a transition. There may be different preferences, and I'll talk about my own thinking about that a little bit later. But but the other interesting thing is that so far, real estate markets haven't changed very much. The realtors who I've talked to are still busy. There's there's still work being done. And even home construction hasn't really closed down particularly. So so it's it hasn't changed all that much. We are project, we are most comfortable, under those circumstances, with a 4% growth rate continued on for the next 10 years, which is a little, which is about what we've been doing in in the last few years of this decade. That gets us to a count of 1952 in 2020, and a population of about 2,800, 2,900 or so by 2030. Interestingly enough, if we continued this for a 25-year period, we hit 5,000 people in 2045. And when we asked people, kind of a loaded question in our listening sessions, what would be your ideal population ultimately for Piastza? People said 5,000 people. So so that sort of coincidence of numbers felt felt about right. So we're using that number or that that ratio as a as as a projection of population needs. So here we go through the table of looking at the population, the household population, which, since we don't have group quarters, remains the same. The average people per household, so we're slightly decreasing that, that's erring on the side of more units needed. The an increase in the vacancy rate, right now, the vacancy rate of Piastza, according to the 18 estimates, is hardly anything. It's 2.3%. So so with a little bit more rental housing, maybe that increases a bit. A just sort of nominal replacement need of about a unit per year, put this all in the in in the box, and we get a 10-year need of about 347 units or about 35 units per year. We then distribute that out by owner occupancy and renter occupancy. But by the way, now with 35 units per year, compared to that, we did a projection for Dubuque County as well. we did a projection for Dubuque County as well on, on a countywide basis. And their average need over the next 10 years is going to be 214 units, something, 214, 217 units. That, that means that our share under these assumptions is almost exactly 16%, which is what we were able to observe over the last three years. So it's really a continuation of this trend that we've seen since about 2016. If we distribute the, the income range over our existing income distribution, we get this sort of a, of, of a table. So of the 347 units, we're projecting a pretty similar owner-renter split that's about 80%, 20%, 268 owner-occupied units, 79 renter-occupied units. And then by, by doing an affordability calculation on the existing income distribution, we come up with this kind of a, of a mix. So, so, so we're, we're looking at a market for about 136 units that's affordable to, that's under $250,000. Doesn't mean that that's what'll get built, but, 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 but it means that some people will, will choose to pay a little bit more for, for housing. About 133 units, you can see it's a pretty much an even split above 250,000, with the biggest chunk being in the 250 to $350,000 range. Keep in mind that these are in current-year dollars, so they will continue to inflate. But, but it's, it's easier to, to calculate this based on the numbers that we're familiar with right now, rather than inflating incomes and inflating housing values in, into the future. We have a demand, we think, for about 79 rental units. And they split by about 32 in what we would consider an affordable range, 500 to $1,000. About 18 in a market range, which are 1,000 to 1,500. And about 29 in a high-market range. This reflects higher end or higher-income older adults who are selling their houses and downsizing and moving into a rental setting, albeit a fairly expensive one, could be a rental villa or something like that. So, so that gives you a sense of what we're thinking about in terms of, of, of overall affordable or attainable housing need over the next 10 years. And suggests that we have a pretty significant market to try to capture in, in, in that range that's, that's in current-year dollars, a 200 to $250,000 range, by no means a low-end range, but not necessarily exactly what's getting built in Piast right now. The next thing that we do is, the, the next thing that we do is, is, and, and this is a new thing, is, is to look at different housing types and densities and look at what that means in terms of affordability. So that, that tells us whether a, a, a convention of single-family detached unit versus some other kind of housing makes sense or, or, or is appropriate for that age group. The genesis of this is that we would generate demands for single-family or owner-occupied housing below $200,000 and then have communities tell us, we can't build for that, 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 that it can't, that, that that particular product cannot be built for that price. So we're taking a little bit of a guess here in terms of what that demand might be in terms of affordability and, and constructability over the years. So it, when we think about the moderate market, that 200, $250,000 range, we're suggesting that about 40% of it can be in, captured in, in, in conventional large lot, single-family development. About 40% is going to require something that's a little bit more efficient in terms of infrastructure cost per unit. So that would be small lot, single-family. About 20% might actually prefer attached or townhouse settings. Whereas when we get to the high market, it's going to be mostly conventional, single-family, even though some segment may want a different, a different setting. So these are kind of original guesses of, of what the market might demand in terms of housing type. And it becomes useful as we think about land use planning and so forth to, to look at zoning categories and, and, and different densities of housing. For comparison, it was, it was interesting to look at, at, at various densities. So Thunder Valley, of which we have one loop built, has a, has a, a gross density that is including the streets of about 3.64 units per acre. It's pretty, pretty healthy density for single-family attached. Parkview is about 3.7 units per acre. Royal Oaks, about 3.5, that, that is the area, Royal, that whole Royal Oaks area west of, of, of Sundown, 3.53 units per acre. The condominiums on, on Bird's Road, which, which we, is, is, is a net density is about 20 units per acre. If those were, if you had a big area that were built out with those, with those kinds of buildings. So it gives, we are, again, most of our construction is in this conventional, single-family right at the Ford unit or, and just, and just below range. We're building a little bit in, in, in the larger lot, single-family attached category, which would have a net density of about six units per acre. When we distribute that then out over the, over housing types, it produces for owner-occupied, 227 single-family units, of which about 127, again, from a standpoint of, of, of these assumptions, would be conventional large lot, about 100 units being a little bit more efficient, smaller lot, kind of corresponding to, let's see, maybe 6,000 or 7,000 square foot lots, and then some single-family attached. So again, this gives you an idea of, of, of what the future might look like over the next 10 years as we try to square housing, construction and density with affordability. Okay, so that's so much for the numbers. That's, that's kind of what we're looking at in terms of future demand. About 350 units, a range of housing prices. And Jim, you have a question, do you have a question? Anybody?
I was looking for an explanation of the DU per acre. I wasn't sure what the-
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, 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 it's dwelling unit per acre.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. I, we get, we get so much into this jargon that we forget that not everybody works with it all the time. Okay, so now we move, now we move on to, to an assessment of, of assets and issues that we, that we see. And we'll, we'll quickly go over these, they're, so, so take this as the perceptions of somebody who had the pleasure of visiting the town for two days and walked around and, and saw a lot of it and, and has done some reading and talking, but, but are not necessarily things that I would go over the wall for. So if somebody sees something in here that just is like wildly wrong, please let me know. And if it's wildly right, then, then pat me on the head for how insightful I am. The, so first of all, Piast's place in the region is, is, is an asset. So we were once a rural hamlet. We're now the fastest-growing single community in the, in, in the Dubuque metropolitan area. It, it, it's perceived that way, the perception of the, of the town in, in the, in, in the region plays to its strengths. And, and it's one of the reasons why it's growing, the strengths being schools and institutions and, and a communal feeling. Also, it doesn't hurt to be on Highway 20. Highway 20 makes, makes the, the city features of Dubuque very close. It's very convenient to, to the commercial strips of the Northwest arterial. There's, there, it, it, there, there are a lot, there's a lot going forward in, in, in the region. Piast has an unusually active development community. People are both developing subdivisions, which is giving you the luxury of having a good number of improved platted lots and building housing. And they're also philanthropists. So, you know, when I, when I, when I look at, at what somebody like A.J. Spiegel, who I tried to call, but we weren't able to connect, gets, has done for the, for the town from a number of perspectives, it, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty interesting. And, 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 and really produce some, some assets that are, that are, that are quite unusual. So this kind, this, this combination that I observed of, of builders and developers and a real commitment for, to the town and, and the idea of the town of what it is and what it could be is, is, was, was really something that, that I thought was impressive. The schools are, are, are almost uniformly mentioned as a major strength of, of the city. From, from the elementary school to Seton to the community college, there, the, these are real assets that, that are, that are significant strengths for, for the city. Obviously, the employment base, having, having an employment center that's over 2,000 employees, it's largely industries, is, is, is a huge asset to the community. And it also generates a housing demand that we might want to be doing a better job of satisfying. And that is of people who work in, in, in the town, providing them the opportunity to live in the town, which we're not necessarily doing because of the, the, the relative cost of housing. Whoops, a typo here that I've got to fix. Piast has lots to build on and room to grow. So there's a, a good supply of platted lots in town and within the existing city limits, also room to, to, to develop. We were excited to read about the new bowling alley. Well, we heard about that, but, but now it's been announced. That will be an exciting thing, I know for the community. And, and, and it, it, that and Fairway and a few other things are, are making at least the beginning of a retail base that will get stronger from a local perspective as, as the community grows toward our target population of 5,000. And, and finally, public initiatives. That, that the, the new wastewater facility is going to be a very good thing, both in terms of public service and reliability and in terms of allowing expansion of the industrial area and maybe a, a second way out that, that would be very important from a transportation perspective. The, we're, we're excited, obviously excited to the point of putting in a proposal for that, of, of the city doing a comprehensive plan and a park and trail plan, because those are very significant steps to take. I had the chance to read the 2019 goal statement by the city council and that told us a lot in terms of recognition of certain needs and, and aspirations on the part of the council. So, so these, these things are all really important. And, and we were enthused both in terms of this project and also in terms of thinking about a proposal for the other project and the vision and sort of awareness of the importance of public space connectivity that was reflected in those, in, in those documents. Now, the other side of the fence, challenges and opportunities. And it's no accident here that I chose the railroad to illustrate, but that it, it, it is, it is what, what, what it is. Number one, and we've talked about this already, the lack of attainable ownership opportunities. And, and, and we've begun to use the word, as many people in the housing consulting field have done, have used the word attainable rather than affordable because affordable gets associated with, with, with cheap and subsidized. And we're not really meaning that. Rather, we're thinking about attainable housing as being attainable to the population groups that we think you will need to, to, to foster young leadership and bedding in the community and kids and, 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 and so forth. So the, the fact that new housing is over $300,000 on, on the average and, and, and that the overall cost of hous- housing requires a pretty hefty, at least a six-figure income to be able to afford, means that it, it is not necessarily attainable to some, to, to younger households, to, to, to workers, just in some cases, to independent seniors. And certainly, and, and this is a little bit of an editorial comment, to the people whose essential nature has really become extremely evident to us in, in the last month and a half. The, the people we don't necessarily remember and think about, but who are really kind of keeping us, keeping, and, and it may be Benny of you, but keeping the rest of us alive. So, so we, we, we are lacking those, those opportunities. The housing monoculture is that most of what we're building is single-family. It's diversified a little bit in terms of single-family attached. But, but the number of other housing forms that we think will probably need to be building more in the future as construction costs increase, we, we really aren't, aren't doing. Part of that is that some of the multifamily stuff that's been built, specifically the project that you see on the left, does not have, give people a very good feeling. And, 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 and it's amazing how many communities we work with where, where a, a bad multifamily project really has an aura that, that, that stays with it and makes it hard to build good multifamily development when it's needed. So, so in, in many cases, in, when, when there's a solidly single-family owner-occupied area, there is resistance to building multifamily. It's, or, or higher-density development, it's considered a NIMBY use. Largely on these past experiences or on the scale of buildings or, or other kinds of, of incompatibilities. So just that kind of expectation of, of people opposing it tends to scare developers and builders off and, and, and can create this kind of, this, this kind of an issue. Many people when we, who we talked to, and I certainly observed this, made the observation that, that Piast, being a, a very little hamlet at the time that, that places that were farther away from Dubuque, like Farley and Eppworth, were developing town centers, didn't really have a center of town. And there's an old town, but it's, but, but it's more of a loose collection of buildings, not really a central district. There, there is an incipient center developing around the interchange to the, that we're calling the Roundabout District. But, but, but still, it's mainly auto-oriented. There's not a place that you would really characterize as something that you would walk or ride a bike to. And, and the idea that has been articulated already of a community park, of a major park, is recognizing that and recognizing that the park can be that kind of center. So we talk about centers, it's, it's different for every community. And it is not necessarily a new Main Street or, or, you know, Disneyland, Main Street, USA. But, but it involves some sort of center, public space. And, and it can have very interesting housing implications as well, as we'll discuss in a minute. Number four is, is connectivity. Because the, the subdivisions are separated, basically we have two through connections, Bird's Road and Piast Street slash Main Street. And you always have to come out to those streets to, 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 to get in or out. The railroad does not help that situation very much at all. And railroads are notoriously hard to cross with streets that aren't already there. But, but, but in addition- But, but, but in addition to that, and again, the city has articulated this, that the, the need for trails and sidewalks and so forth, and that kind of active transportation connectivity is also missing. Supporting amenities, the, the, we, we really don't have a major public park as such. And I know that's part of the objective of, of the Parks and Trails master plan idea. Trails are really important and, and, and one thing we've experienced during the pandemic is that trails in most places are loaded with people. They, they have become very, very popular. And have become extremely important in terms of, of, of the life of communities. The impact of the Southwest arterial, we don't know what that's going to be, but it will open big areas of Southwest Dubuque to development. It may siphon off part of the market that, that we have begun to capture. And so that means that where we might not be in a competitive environment to the degree that we were once now. We, we, we do have to think about this kind of amenity structure and public space and, and, and creating a complete community. And then finally, we come to the current thing that we're in, COVID-19. And, and this, again, anybody who claims to be an expert other than epidemiologists about the effects of this is probably guessing. But, but, but I'll take my guesses here as well. Number one is that one thing that, that, that I really firmly believe is that short-term public policy, and this is beyond the city, but this does deal with state and private sector behavior, has to allow people to stay in their homes, that, that, that rent forbearance or rent reduction so that, so that the positive, so that payments that, that require rents beyond maintenance and, and operations costs really ought to be deferred. Mortgage payments should be, should be put on a holiday and added on to the end of, of mortgages. The worst thing that could happen, or one of the worst things that could happen that would compound the, the, the disaster that we're finding ourselves in would be if people were out of their houses. And, and, and if we had a recreation of, of 08 to 10 in terms of foreclosures. It's, it's not going that way, thank God, but, but, but that would be a, a terrible thing. Number two is that I think, I think that COVID will affect the physical preferences of housing consumers. So there's been a, a huge amount of construction in, in cities and to some degree in Dubuque of apartment blocks and apartment developments that are double-loaded corridors. Public lobbies, fairly high, high, high-density sort of settings. And I can't help but think that, that, that social distancing is not going to go away. So smaller-scale buildings with more independent ways out. And a, a different kind of form i- is going to be in vogue increasingly in the future. And that actually can be helpful to Piasta. Because it, 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 it makes the lower density of the city an asset. And, and suggests that a smaller-scale multifamily, as opposed to big buildings that are out of scale with existing houses, may not be quite as popular as they, as, as they once were, either with builders or with occupants. Number three, I mentioned this before, the crisis is pointing out how critical people who we didn't appreciate enough are. People are keeping my computer on and the power on and the, the store shelved and so forth. And, and I think that we all have a responsibility to provide attainable housing opportunities for those people. And fourth, in any case, housing and housing development will be a critical part of economic recovery. So, so it's, it's, it's important to think about changes and adaptations that we may, we may, may, may need to make in, in the future. So finally, we come to, to, to directions forward. Where have we come in 30 years? Well, we have, we have established ourselves as a major regional center for single-family development. We have developed major community facilities, schools, the community college, the community center, the recreational fields. We've created a major, we, I mean, Mr. Siegel has created a major industrial nucleus for, for, for the city. We, the, the city has upgraded public infrastructure that will be critical to future growth. And the city has articulated and begun to act on building the fabric that connects its various parts and features and, and attractions together. And, and, and I think has elicited a, 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 a strong focus for the future. Let's see. So, so as we, as, as we build on that, we recommend the following housing program. One is a, a housing program that is sensitive to and provides for the recreational opportunities of a life cycle of residents as opposed to a relatively narrow group that has a focus and, on attainable homeownership for moderate and middle-income and young family households and people who work in the city. So the higher end really kind of takes care of itself. Public policy really needs to, to deal with the people who the private market is not right now serving. Can serve, but isn't right now serving. Number two is, is, is to create a new planned central district that probably in combination with community park, that could provide a place for more diverse housing types and avoid the conflicts created by perceived impacts on existing neighborhoods. So when you go and talk about building smaller lot, single-family next to larger lot, single-family, people start getting pretty suspicious of that. And I, I don't know if that would be true in the Dubuque area, but, but in our work in the Kansas City metropolitan area, that's definitely been the case in, 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 in Kansas City. But if it's something that's, that's planned and put in order and related to other community activities, it, it becomes easier to establish higher-density places that feel more walkable and feel more community-oriented. And are not necessarily in the space of people who want to live in lower-density, farther-away settings. And, and, and so, and so I think that to stick a multifamily building right next to Royal Oaks would be a fairly silly thing to do. But to think about higher-density development in, in, in part of a, of, of, of a, of a more public, more mixed-use or, or, or multi-density center gets to make a little bit more sense and a little bit easier to, to, to deal with. Number three is to build community by providing connections that link neighborhoods together into major community destinations. And then four, takes advantage of, 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 of what I think will be a major potential asset along Highway 20 with a frontage road and, and maybe more safe access along the 20 corridor. And I know there are reservations about, about access control. I think we can make that work in, in, in our, in, in our favor. Okay, there we go. So, so in, in, in looking at the first item, the life cycle, this is a little bit of an assessment of what people are looking for in each one of those stages of life. And how well I, I, I initially thought that Piasta does on that. So we're very good on providing the nurturing neighborhoods and, and safe neighborhoods that kids need to, to grow up healthy and, and mentally and physically. Not so good at, at the starting-out starter place-to-experiment kind of category. You know, we can decide, it's another issue whether that's a, a, a market that you want to meet, but, but, but not so good at that. A little bit more cautionary in terms of the settling-down stage where younger people can settle in and be best in the community, become part of it. Quite good with the prospering segment, obviously. And again, maybe not quite so good with the aging segment to with what, what appears to be the exit, the exiting or the outmigration of, of older adults from, from the city into, into other settings. We took a little, in, in terms of that, a little bit of a look at opportunity focuses at, at, at places where, where, where growth might happen or where attention might, might be paid. Some of these are projects that are, that are underway. We're very intrigued by the site east of Cock Springs and between Parkview and Cock Springs, very, that, that 80 acres has very, very intriguing possibilities. Looking at the possibility of looking at, at, at the Roundabout District, the Old Town. We have the development areas that are growing to, to the, to the north and also with, with Thunder Valley to the east. Industrial development, the possibility of street and connectivity and even trail connectivity from north to south are all things to think about. In terms of looking at the future of the community and particularly in, in relation to a comprehensive plan. But now we focus on how, on, on specific housing issues. And we thought that the, 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 the main issues to being able to realize the possibility of attainable housing, and, and by this, we're really meaning in a 200, 200 to $300,000 range in that, in, in, in that, in that category. And, and a similar range of, 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 a related range of, of multifamily development, cost of infrastructure, potential local opposition, and that gets related to unpredictable approvals, site acquisition and availability, and risky economics. You are not a place that's lacking development capability at all. And, and, and so there's no need to think about deep partnerships and, and new development corporations to get something that can't happen to, to, to happen. It's really a matter of, of, of looking at the obstacles and, and, and helping to, to, to ease those. So first of all, infrastructure. Infrastructure costs can be a, a real significant disincentive to to attainable housing development. Land costs are high enough as they are, but, but then you add a privately held and risk, at-risk cost of maybe 30, 40, $50,000, a, a lot. And things become expensive. One solution that we would recommend to you is if you want to move into a, 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 a price point sector that's less than is currently being built in the private market, that there's room for some level of city participation, and there are various ways in this can be structured. Deferred loans that are paid back on sale of property, we'll call an infrastructure bank. Special assessments, in some cases, tax increment financing, that, that can be used to build and help finance infrastructure. And a method that we are interested in and we've been proposing to communities is a graduated level of participation. So that the more a developer integrates income or, and price diversity into a project, the more likely the city is going to be to, to, to share some of the risk of developing that kind of infrastructure. Clearly, for the higher end, the, the builders don't really need that help. At, at the lower end, in order to make costs come out in those ranges, they may. Similarly, they'll, they'll need some indulgence in terms of lot sizes and land use and zoning categories that make that, make that possible. Potential local opposition can be a, really a big deal with developers who really are looking for reliability and predictability. So one thing that we suggest doing is, is, is not fighting the battle, but finding sites that are not, that are good sites, that are appropriate, have access to services and are, are likely to avoid resistance from people who really just don't want a different kind of housing around them. And I'm not being critical of that, it's, 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 it's a fact of life. So in Piasta, these could include a planned central district, as we discussed before, that would incorporate some of these, what we refer to as missing middle, middle-density housing types that, that, that address the both, both the, the settling-down and the, and, and the kind of coming-of-age households that we talked about earlier. Unused sites in the Roundabout District have, have some appeal. There are potential redevelopment sites that are underused, kind of older industrial sites in the Old Town area. Mixed-use corridors like Sundown Road that already has some commercial developing along it. Or pre-designated sites that are in new subdivisions that haven't emerged quite yet. So, so a project like Thunder Valley does have a mix of housing types and, and, and that's something that could, that could occur in, in, in other projects as well. So some examples of, of, of this kind of development, this is actually Somerset in Ames, Iowa, where you see single-family, this is a example of this kind of planned center on a bigger scale, where you see a combination of townhomes, single-family, low-density, multifamily and, and a little bit of commercial as well. This is a project that's near our office downtown, in downtown Omaha, even though it doesn't look like a downtown, that are single-family attached houses in, actually built out at a, at a very high density of 16 units per acre. Unpredictable approvals. Developers hate taking risks and, 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 and one of the biggest obstacles to building some of the housing that, that really is in demand by millennials and Generation Zers coming of age is exactly the kind of housing that generates opposition. And developer or builder will get so far down the line and, and, and get denied and, and, and leaves with very bad taste in their mouths. Solution to that is a land use plan in advance that identifies areas that are appropriate for higher-density development. And, and developing that through a community process that includes everybody can be a good way of increasing the, the, the developer's predictability. Site availability can be an issue. And there are a couple of ways of doing this that include working with a, a local owner who has a unified property, unified ownership, who's development-oriented and really looking for a legacy project. So if you know one of those, that would be the thing. Or under, identifying underused or available properties that, that could be developed. Doing test fits that show what could happen on those properties and then showing those benefits to the, to, to the owners of, of, of these underperforming properties. Also looking at public land that isn't necessarily used very intensively. Campuses, school properties and so forth, and thinking about how those could be used. Or when a facility is replaced with something else of, 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 of what the use of that site could be. And, and, and in some cases, public sites can make, can make very good spots for housing. Risky economics. This, this gets into a, a, a different part of the market. But, but, and, and it's really the kind of nonprofit development sector here. That might involve even in something like a, a, a mixed-use or mixed-density center, partnerships with an organization like ECDC. Who really, really pretty, we thought the Pocket Neighborhood Project from Akoketa, which is a community where we've worked in the past, is a pretty exciting kind of project that's, that's really designed toward a moderate-income household. Forming partnerships with, with a local development corporation or a community development corporation like, like ECDC like ECDC um could 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 be beneficial. Um, uh, it becomes the city's responsibility to to assemble local support. That can include marketing through realtors and local financing through through banks. Um, another another uh issue or possibility is evaluating the possibility of employer assisted housing, where employers uh help with down payments for their employees in town, uh reducing some of the risk to lenders or to or to developers. Uh, there are a whole a range, a whole range of options that uh of of situations where where employers with with an interest have um have helped build housing. Um, and even a shared equity program, which is a way in which uh a uh younger household can uh can uh rent housing unit, build equity in that unit and then buy it uh as that equity is 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 accumulated. I don't know that's a program that ECDC has done, but but one of our community development corporations in Omaha has done that very, very successfully and um and and for providing starter housing that people with a lot of with with student debt and so forth can't afford and build up equity basically in in savings can be a very attractive sort of program. So so some solutions to be able to adopt and move toward um toward uh developing housing that that might speak to a new generation and a new sector of people who were 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 not exactly um addressing right now. And finally, some some illustrations of what some of these things mean uh in the in the context of of say, a new center, a shared equity housing. Uh, this is in a town that we've done a housing plan for recently in East Springs, Missouri, uh a suburb of Kansas City that are small lots, single family, single family attached, uh a really cool senior housing village, townhouses near St. Louis University where SLU has uh has developed a a a very strong employer, namely them, assistance program for members of the campus community, uh including workers and faculty to encourage people to live in the area uh around uh around the university. And so uh hopefully uh you found this interesting and useful and and uh and something other than just a a an hour and fifteen minutes monologue. Um, I know it isn't easy to listen to over Zoom, so I hope uh I hope it was good and and um be glad to take any questions that you might have, comments, reactions, anything.
So Marty, that was an awful lot of information to take in. Uh, thank you for that. I really appreciate the color with which you were able to to share it too. So since we are in a Zoom format, it's going to be a little different than if we were in a room together.
Yeah.
Um, I might I might go around the council and just uh one by one, let's ask if if there's questions or commentary, observations, anything that each of the council members would like to share.
Sounds good.
So without planning this ahead of time, I'll just start with Jerry. Um, but what might you add to this discussion?
Was there anything else in the study? Is there going to be more to the study that has um suggested areas or or places for growth or something that you you've kind of dealt with the study that might show a little bit more of a map? Or or is it just just basically going through all the different um household median incomes and then finding our shortfalls?
Yeah, that that's more uh that. Um, you know, that so so uh, you know, it's it's generally that's that's done uh that and that kind of level of detail is done within the the rubric of a comprehensive plan. So so this is, I think, trying to be suggestive of certain directions or things to study, but but uh and and it and it shows growth areas that will that that are within the current city limits and number twelve is not in the city limits. It's 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 outside of the limits right now, but but sort of represents what we think would be the the extent of growth. Uh, but it's but don't consider it to be a land use plan. That's kind of um, so 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 ultimately, we we would, we would want to see this and some of the policies and directions that are included in here uh incorporated into a comprehensive plan, but but it 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 doesn't quite go to that level.
To address your question, Jerry, anything else?
Nope, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Uh, move on to Kathy.
Um, the uh from what I got from the study, you're saying that as far as rental properties go between the year twenty twenty and twenty twenty five, that we should have be uh for a rental price of five hundred to a thousand, we need fourteen units and then eight for the fifth thousand to fifteen hundred and then twelve more for the high end. Is that correct?
Uh, I want to get to that page, yeah.
So what I'm saying is I don't see, you're saying that we don't have a high need for rental property here.
Um, you you don't unless you choose to. So so what we've what we've done is just simply applied this, you, there is a need for rental property in the region. We we are using the current uh rental owner split that P- PIASTA currently has, which is eighty-two percent owner occupied and eighteen percent renter, and saying we will project that into the future and it will be the same, it will be the same general format. If if you said as a matter of policy, and and you know, this is where this becomes a tool as much as it is a a a a formal recommendation, if 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 we're if we're talking about um policy and you said, well, we we want a different distribution, you know, we want uh two-thirds rental, two-thirds uh owner, one-third rental or fifty-fifty, then then these then these numbers might might change a good deal. And you could certainly support that by by becoming a more significant renter center, rent rental center for the for the Dubuque metro area as you become a more uh, you know, a more uh powerful owner occupied center for the metropolitan area.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes sense, but 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 uh, yeah, no, it's simply a proj- the the occupancy split's simply a projection of 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 what PIASTA is now.
I kind of look at PIASTA as uh what the West End used to be in Dubuque. So if you were just starting out or you were in a lower income job, you would live more in the center of town or the downtown area. And then as you became more affluent or had more income, you would move out to the West End. It's not like the per se, the West End had to accommodate more of the uh low to medium income. Well, it was more of a medium income neighborhood, but but people moved up to that. So I'm wondering in PIASTA, if we're going to accommodate the lower incomes, are you saying that we need to designate like a certain neighborhood for under two hundred thousand, houses under two hundred thousand? Or are the are they supposed to be incorporated into our existing neighborhoods or what would you say?
I would say that where where you see affordable, moderate, that price range, it it's probably not going to be, is probably not going to be built new in PIASTA. Uh, it it, there are different ways of accommodating that market uh that 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 might make sense, but largely it's it's going to wind up being filled by existing housing if it if it's filled, if it's filled at all.
So you're not recommending doing like a um
Low-income housing.
Lower income housing development.
No, no, and remember, well, this is actually, this is actually based on the existing income distribution of PIASTA. So
Right.
So, yeah, so yeah, so so there are, so you know, it 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 moves up through the through the process, but no, we're not, we're, we we would never say you should build, uh, you should designate a specific area for low-income households.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Like, like you were saying, that some of the housing in Farley or Eppworth was lower, uh, their housing was lower priced than actually PIASTA. So if P- if people that worked in the area actually wanted more affordable house, you know, if they couldn't afford afford a house in PIASTA, there is Farley and Eppworth close by.
Correct.
Not to mention Dubuque, yes.
Dubuque, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Kathy, this is Jim. If I can springboard off of that, I think what what I'm hearing from the discussion is a decision we have to make is to what extent do we desire to keep, uh, and I'm going to speak specifically of the industrial park, but it's just as an as an example, the people who work in the industrial park, do we aspire to have them also live here or we aspire or accept that they will go live in Eppworth or Farley or somewhere else, uh, and then just drive into town for their job?
Well, per what Marty's saying, I think if unless the uh unless the wages change in the industrial park, it might be their choice to live in Farley, Eppworth, or Dubuque as opposed to here, since he did not recommend that we do um lower income, specific lower income. I don't see the housing in the, I mean, these are not elaborate big houses, but I don't see the price of these houses going down, so.
No, and that's why when he mentioned that McCopey uh project, the this and and the city getting involved in infrastructure, that's how the city could, if you guys wanted to, you would step in to purposely change what is the current trend, meaning currently, if we leave things alone, like Eric and his wife, Eric and Leanne cannot live here. But if you guys so choose that you want PIASTA housing to go a slightly different direction, you could step in, you could tip the infrastructure and pay for, you know, the infrastructure so when somebody else builds it, their house price is lower. So it's a, that's a, it's a policy decision that you guys can make or not make. I mean, I don't think there's not a right or wrong answer, it just depends on what the council feels like is best for PIASTA. So I know we've talked about it and I think coronavirus definitely changes, but I mean, the market was just so, so strong and land prices are so high here that I think Marty's thing is overlaying these numbers and keeping these trends in place, everything held constant. There will likely not be housing attainable for, you know, twenty-somethings working public service jobs unless we unless we interject.
Until the until um uh some of this, these areas begin to age.
Yes.
Yes, there you go.
Right. Yes, yeah, no, exactly right.
Which would be my
Well, I think
Go ahead. I'm finished.
I think we also have to take in consideration is in the industrial park, will the health of the industrial park grow if we're able to house some of the employees?
I would see that as a factor, except for the fact that we do have Farley, Eppworth, Dubuque, all in very close proximity. I do.
When we think about attracting business, um, as we are in a extraordinary, other than the very recent past, extraordinarily low uh employee or unemployment, had that promise of of having a workforce proximal to a business is considering coming here, maybe uh, you know, one of those factors that helps bringing them here.
Hmm.
Uh, and and to the, I I also just, if I can, Kathy, to follow up on yours, uh, I sensed a bit of a of a false binary there. There are a lot of degrees of variability between a three hundred thousand dollar uh one-acre, single-family home and low-income housing, to use that term. Uh, Marty had a lot of pictures in there about other creative ways to make housing affordable in that in that total spectrum. So I I I think it's not a question of yes or no, it's more of a question of which which degrees of deviation from what we know today are we motivated to do? So I think, uh, Kat, you had said, you're 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 good?
Yep, I'm good.
All right. Great discussion on that, thank you. Uh, John, you started in, why don't you take the floor?
Uh, yeah, I think there's a lot of information here for us to adjust. I think it's good information. I don't guess that we really, as a group, didn't already know, um, that we have a lot of single family homes, a little rental or lower-end community. It's just we have to take this information and decide what direction we feel best for the community. I don't think, I think none of this information is spread to anybody that's on this. You know, um, just what direction we want to take and what what do we want to attract?
Anything else?
Nope, that's about it.
Thank you. Karen?
I thought it was, uh, thank you for the presentation, Marty.
Thanks. My pleasure.
Other than that, I guess it is what it is. We'll have to work through it. Thank you.
Very well. Uh, then rounding out the council, Doug, what would you add?
Kathy pretty much said everything I I was looking at. Um, the only thing that I hope as a council we do is try to be able to accommodate somehow the lower income, this, you know, like the police department people, the city workers that we have that that can't afford to live here in a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, some way of coming up with a plan for that lower mid-range group that can live here.
Okay. Um, and so that's going through the council. Um, I do, given your role in this, uh, your central role in this, Whitney, and and your exposure to the data, I'm curious what observations you take away from this that you'd want to share with the council?
Oh, well, I mean, this, the report in this format and Marty's presentation are just, I mean, absolute gold. I mean, a night like tonight is something I look forward to. And so getting this type of, not only the front-end data, the first half of the report is so extremely valuable, but the last half is what I will spend, you know, be combing through over the next weeks and months particularly. I mean, Marty, I really appreciate the last, the approaches and the solutions, those, you know, are things go wade through and have to, you know, we have to lay this on top of everything else we have going on in the city, you know, our other priorities. So this just pulls the housing piece together and it's, I mean, we will be able to reference this and use this in a lot of our decisions. Now, the the policy decisions, you know, those will not ever be made and those aren't, there won't be right or wrong answers. So I don't think, I don't know, I mean, this all, it kind of makes makes my head want to explode because it's so much great stuff and it's just, it really to me highlights how many opportunities we have and how much influence the council can have through this and a comprehensive plan over, you know, we're really at a position where we can still take control of what PIASTA is going to do, the ball's rolling, but it's not so fast. We still have some land, you know, we still have some maneuvering. So I think it just, it just makes me really, really excited, particularly for the next about eighteen months, but then, I mean, I still think we have some heavy lifting from a planning perspective, but this sort of really high-level data-supported analysis is such a huge step for us to start hashing out, you know, the policy direction that the council wants to adhere to. Yeah, I I mean, thank you, Marty, for coming to PIASTA. I know we really just sneaked it in at last minute, a couple days later.
No kidding.
You know. yeah, I had a phenomenal time with you. I mean, for those of you who don't know, I mean, Marty would be certainly somebody, people in my position would absolutely look up to as somebody who's got the answers. And so it was it was a pleasure to be able to pick his brain and I'll be, I mean, it'll take, it'll take a while for me to soak in all this that is here, but it's 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 cool. That's fantastic. I'm very grateful.
But I I appreciate that. If I could just say a couple of things to sum up is that these, a study like this really puts puts choices out there. It's not, you're you're I'll 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 give you a kind of parallel example. We've we've been doing housing studies in Webster City for a number of years and and are just starting a comprehensive plan for Webster City. And Webster City, when we started working with them, had, they didn't think that there was any demand for housing. And and whether there was a demand or not, there was nobody who was developing anything. There are no 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 lots, no subdivisions. And so we were able to substantiate a demand they didn't know they had. And and they actually have now done six phases of a development that was city-financed. So so you don't need to do that. You that I mean, that was that was from a housing perspective, heroic action. You know, the city actually going in and building a subdivision. You don't need to do that. You're 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 getting development happening. And the choice here is by by, do you want to diversify the mix a little bit? Do you want to attract a a population that may be related to PIAZA but isn't isn't really, can't really afford it right now? Not a low-income population, but 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 a level that that can't comfortably afford to live here right now because of the price of housing. And and by taking some policy steps, you you can, you can begin to make that happen with the existing development community. It's a it's a it's 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 a choice. I I think that we benefit from 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 doing that because we've got to be able to rejuvenate the community and 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 attract younger people who then wind up becoming the city council members of the future. But but it's 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 hopefully a policy tool that you will find useful and and that presents some ideas out there that you might consider.
Very good. I do I do recognize that this is, this will be very instrumental for us to understand what we need to to make PIAZA grow the way we want it to grow, specifically for housing. I do also recognize there's another really big question behind that is, once we decide what, we have to figure out the how. And that is the the supporting impetus behind the follow-on studies that are going on, which came up in a comprehensive plan, as I understand it, which really gives us a map of how we move from where we are to what it is we've now decided we want to be. Okay, well, I think that covers the content of this meeting. I will open it up to the council if there's any other follow-on comments. All right, hearing nothing, then I think we're up for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Karen and I.
Jerry, I.
Kathy, I.
I'll conclude the meeting. Marty, thank you very much for your dedication to to throw out this.
And and be well, everyone. Be well.
Absolutely. You too.
Thank you, Marty.
Take care. Thanks. Thanks, Marty.
Bye for now, everyone.